Welcome to the July 12th, 2021 Select Board Meeting. In accordance with an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law by Governor Charlie Baker. Tonight's Select Board Meeting will be conducted remotely via Zoom and will not be open to the public for physical attendance. The meeting is being recorded, livestreamed, and cable-broadcasted by the Easton Community Access Television, which is Comcast 98, Verizon 23, and on ecatswebsite@www.eastoncat.org. This meeting is being closed captioned for the hearing impaired. If you're watching on your computer, you'll see a CC button on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen. If you're watching at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email Michael Blanchard, And if you are on your computer, you can pose your question on the Q&amp;A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I would like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure that we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Mark Lamb.
Jennifer Stacy.
And I'm Dottie Fulgenetti. Thanks for being here tonight. So the first item that we have on our agenda is a one-day alcohol license for the Easton Shovel Town Cultural District. One second, let me just get to the description. The applicant Carolyn Cole, on behalf of the Easton Shovel Town Cultural District, has applied for a one-day beer and wine license for the Legacy 2021 Summer Concert Series at Oaks Ames Memorial Hall, Three Barrows Drive in Easton, on Tuesday, July 15th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. The Easton Police Department has reviewed the request and an officer is not necessary. Connor?
For the first event, that is the case. For the item we amended the agenda for this morning that has not yet been finalized. But so yes, for the one we're reviewing now, Item A, no detail is required.
Okay, so I'll just, Carolyn is not here with us tonight, I don't believe. So I just will go over the Easton Shovel Town Cultural District, Oaks Ames Hall, and the Mass Cultural Council have come together to bring this free concert series. This is part of our cultural district work. And one of the things about this that's great is that we really try to offer things free for the public. So July 15th, Craig Carter with special guest Billy Sciore. They play contemporary, popular, classic rock and blues. They're really great. I've seen them before. And then on July 22nd, Jake and Jenny, they're a country duo who bring Jake's traditional Pennsylvania country upbringing and Jenny's suburban Boston influences together in their music to create an acoustic, a unique acoustic sound, and they'll be accompanied with Dave Spagnone. He's a local singer-songwriter, soloist on guitar and piano, performed gold standard classic pop-rock and soul tunes from across the decades. The start, the admission is at 6:30 and the concert starts at 7:00. And it will be outside or inside if it rains. Bring chairs and there's food and drink for purchase, free admission. So that's what Carolyn would tell you if she was here tonight. So we have the two dates on that. The first one is for July 15th and the second one is for July 22nd. Does anyone have any questions? Can I get a motion to approve both of those one-day alcohol licenses?
Full move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
AC, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the second item on the agenda is the acceptance of a resignation for Tim McCall from the Economic Development Council effective June 30th, 2021. And his term expired June 30th, 2023. So Tim has been on the council for a couple of years. Mark, I don't know if you want to make any comments?
I do. Thank you, Dottie. Yeah, so Tim has been on the council for a number of years. He contributed to every meeting. He always was really thoughtful, meaning meaningful in his questions and everything he contributed. So I just want to, you know, myself and on behalf of the entire Economic Development Council, thank him. On behalf of the town, thank him. You know, he does leave a big void, but that also brings up another question. So, you know, we have a vacancy and it's an exciting group.
Very true. Yeah, Tim, he really brought a different perspective to the group and he will be missed. So thank you for your service, Tim. And I'll take a motion to accept his resignation with regret.
Full move, Barger. I was going to wait for, I was waiting for Mark to say something.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb?
Barger McCall.
Lamb McCall.
Stacy McCall.
And Fulgenetti McCall. Okay, next we have an Audit Committee appointment, Len Berkowitz, for a term expiring on June 30th, 2023. Len currently serves on the Audit Committee and just missed the cutoff, so he had to apply. I'm just checking. I don't know if anyone is here for any of these.
For the next one, Canoe River, we have a new volunteer who is here.
Okay, great. Yeah, generally if it's somebody that's reapplying, we don't ask them to come in because they're usually pretty well-known. So if somebody'd like to make a motion to reappoint Len Berkowitz to the Audit Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2023?
Full move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, Lamb, and it's a roll call?
Barger Berkowitz.
Lamb Berkowitz.
Stacy Berkowitz.
And Fulgenetti Berkowitz. The next item on the agenda is the Canoe River Aquifer Advisory Committee Appointment. We have Michael DiAgardo for a term expiration of June 30th, 2022. And I apologize if I mispronounced Michael's last name. As he joins us.
So I'm realizing as Mike is being moved into the panel that I forgot to include the committee charge in your packet. Canoe River Aquifer Advisory Committee was formed by state legislation in the 80s. Its goal is to educate the public about the benefits of protecting the Canoe River Aquifer. And it's a regional committee from various towns that have the Canoe River watershed within it.
And I'd add, this is a really important committee and our own Wayne Southworth really was instrumental in this for many, many years. So I'm really happy that we've got an applicant for this. Mike, if you'd like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what interested you in volunteering for this position?
Sure, and did a great job with my name. It's Mike DiAguado. DiAguado, see, I don't even say it right half the time. Excuse me. And, well, I live on Sandstone Drive. We moved to the area 14 years ago. I'm originally from the North Shore. I was in the military for 11 years. So I've been out of the state for 25 years and I came back in the late 90s. But when I came to Canoe River or to the eastern area, we have dogs and we really enjoy the outdoors. So we found Red Mill owned by accident because of a traffic problem one time. We tried to use it as a shortcut and then realized it was a blocked off-road. And hey, you know, this is a great area to go. And our first experience is walking down the road and seeing a family going ahead and go sledding down these hills by the river. And ever since then, we walk in there daily. So we're very familiar with the water department. The water department's very familiar with us. When Easton had their cleanup days, the group of dog walkers that we were associated with, we volunteered to go ahead and do the cleanup there. And we would start in Norton, end up in Easton. And we did that for, what, the three years that they had the program? And we would continue, but then that stopped unfortunately. But we still keep the area up and that's what we're known for with the Water Department. And now I'm working with the Norton Land Development, I mean Preservation Group. I'm trying to work with the Norton, the town of Norton, with the problems that we're having with the ATVs. I live on Sandstone, so I'm very familiar with the area behind Bernie and Phil's. And the Eastern Police Department has been very responsive and they actually shut them down for a while and forced them all the way into Norton. And then Norton has maybe listening, it's hard to tell. But, you know, regardless, I'm familiar enough with the area that I'm trying to collaborate with the groups involved to go ahead and maybe find a resolution to prevent the ATVs from getting in there instead of reacting to them. So that being said, and being selfish to have a nice place to walk the dogs, I'd like to preserve the area, be involved with it. And as a matter of fact, when I first got here, I found out about Canoe River Days and attended the Advisory Committee at the Water Department probably about 13 years ago. So I'm a little familiar with it, but I'd like to continue if I can.
Very good. Well, you know that Easton really cares a lot about our natural resources. So this is a really important component to that. Does any of the board members have any questions or comments?
I just have a comment, Michael. I live in the, I live in the Red Mill Road area. And so I hear those ATVs on a regular basis. And I've talked to the neighbors who live on Red Mill Road and they are very concerned about those ATV. So I'm glad to hear that you're involved in a process to hopefully keep them in Norton and not have them come into Easton. So thank you for that.
Mark?
No, no comments. Just thank you for your service. Thank you for volunteering for this. Sounds like you'll be a great fit.
Thank you.
And Jen?
Yeah, we were actually recently hiking in that area with the kids and ran into the ATV situation as well. And luckily they were being safe, but it was really kind of scary apocalyptic vibes of hearing them going around us and freaked the kids out a little bit. So you raising that actually is really encouraging thing because of those time and space things. I just want to say I love your passion and feel for advocacy there.
Well, thank you. But if I can add to your comment there, there's no such thing as a safe ATV on the same road with hikers. There's no motor vehicles allowed in that area. That's a town forest adjacent to a conservation land. And there is no legal way for those ATVs to be there.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
So I'm glad you were safe. And, you know, you're not the first person to go ahead and, you know, meet them face-to-face. I had to escort another young family out of there one afternoon because they were trying to go ahead and do some hiking back in the woods according to a GPS and Geocaching it called. Was that you that I escorted out?
No, it wasn't us. It was, we didn't encounter anybody else other than the ATVs that day, but we do do.
Extending that, you know, that's the problem. And the other problem is it's on the town line and the aquifer is on the town line. So there's really no separation between the two towns right now. It's a community issue that needs to be had of this community.
Well, Mike, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but if you go on our town website for documents on demand and you look up the Canoe River Aquifer Committee, you'll be able to look back at their agendas and minutes historically if you want to catch yourself up on what they've been doing and, you know, where they are right now. So that might be helpful to you. You can also, and for people at home that are interested in any of the boards or committee meetings, you can go to that Documents on Demand and you can check off a box to be notified of any agendas or minutes for any of the board or committee meetings that are of interest to you. So if you care about the Human Rights Committee and you check off the box for that, two days, you know, within the 48 hours of the notice, you'll get a notice anytime the agenda is out. So for anything that you really care a lot about, that's a great way to see when the minutes and agendas are posted. So with that said, Craig, if you'd like to make a motion?
Full moved.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb in a roll call vote?
Barger DiAguado.
Lamb DiAguado.
Stacy DiAguado.
And Fulgenetti DiAguado. So thank you so much for being here tonight and we look forward to you serving and appreciate you stepping up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael.
All right.
Thank you.
And the next item is discussion and a vote regarding a road closure request for a neighborhood get-together at 39 Vineyard Place to 15 Vineyard Place on Sunday, July 18th. We have an attached road closure request and a map from Jennifer Freon for a neighborhood get-together. The area in the block for closure begins at 39 Vineyard Place to 15 Vineyard Place, allowing families to walk freely and safely from their residence to the area where a band will be based. The request has been circulated to Public Safety, the Department of Public Works, Health and Community Services, and they've confirmed no issues noting that the street must stay passable for emergency vehicles. No police officer is required and the residents will use their personal vehicles to block the area off the street requested. The Board of Health notes that any food truck vendor must have the applicable caterers or other permits as communicated to the applicants. This is something that that neighborhood does every year at this time. So there's never been any trouble with that before. And I think the band, if it's who I think it is, it's a young group that lives in that neighborhood that's pretty well-known in Easton. So we hope they will have a great event and great weather. So Craig, if you'd like to make a motion to accept the road closure request?
Full move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
And back to you, Craig?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes.
Just by, just by way of explanation, we had an event several weeks ago with that food truck and it was very, very well-received. So I'm pleased that they're engaging that owner.
Very good. So next we have Contract Amendment Number One for Contract WAT-2021-01 for Environmental Partners Group for Engineering Services Related to Bidding and Construction of the Water Treatment Plant for Redding Iron and Manganese Levels Present in Wells 3, 5, and 7. Connor, do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. So we also have Greg Swan and Rich Tierney from DPW here as well for any particularly technical questions the board may have. But for the board's refresher and background for anyone watching, the Green Sand Filter Iron and Manganese Treatment Plant for Wells 3, 5, and 7 off of Red Mill Road is a longstanding capital priority for DPW Water Division that has been working its way through the capital budgeting and town meeting approval process for a few successive appropriations over many years. Most recently, just in May, town meeting appropriated another 15 million approximately to bring us up to 16.35 million total for design, engineering, construction administration, and the actual construction of the building itself. We are at the point where we are looking to amend the existing contract that we have with the town's engineers working on this project, Environmental Partners, to expand that scope from its initial contract, which included design and permitting. And now this next phase will bring us our, the contract will cover the relationship of Environmental Partners from today through the end of the project to include bidding assistance, construction administration. Sorry, it's quite a long list. Resident Engineering Services, so nine hours a day onsite for the 18 months of construction. Sorry, it's a long scope. Startup and project closeout. And so this is an amendment of roughly 1.43 million. It'll bring design, engineering, construction admin to about 2.4 total. It's within the appropriation and Director Field recommends a warrant, as do I. Greg and Rich can fill in blanks because there's quite a bit of detail here.
Yeah, so back in May of 2020 with the onset of COVID-19, we saw a lot of different impacts coming in on this project. And we thought it was best at the time to kind of, due to the unknowns, to break it up so that we could keep the project moving and then see how the impacts were going to affect the economy and construction costs. So this allowed our project to move forward, but now we're coming back to you folks to address the actual hard part of the engineering, which is all the construction management that needs to be taking place out there, which will probably take, you know, a good 18 months to bring it to a close in the near future.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Craig?
Yeah, just on one of the documents that I read, it says that the EP Construction Administration, administrative staff shall not be responsible for the means, methods, techniques, sequences, or procedures of construction selected by the contractor. Is that false within our responsibility, Rich, or Greg, whoever wants to answer that? Or is that something we have a, do we have an owner's project manager that we rely on to do that?
We do, Craig. And we were working in concert with Ty and Vaughn, who was reviewing the many engineering aspects to this project just to make sure the dollars that we're spending for this project are spent wisely and they're done so that the project is done soundly and that the townspeople get the best product at the end of the project.
And are they responsible for overseeing the construction, the actual construction?
So there is. There is two components to it. So Environmental Partners has residents that will be doing the lion's share, but there will be some spot oversight by Ty and Vaughn during the project.
And then Greg and Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, but generally means and methods are of a purview of a contractor to specify in their construction bids. So the town lays out, this is what we need for you to construct. And then the GC will lay out, you know, this is how many folks will be on site. This is the kind of materials, et cetera.
Yes, that's correct. They, it's the purview of the contractor to build it however they want to based on the contracts that EPG puts together. And EPG is going to be there. They're instrumental being on-site every day to make sure that everything is done the way we want it done. So yes, you're correct, Connor.
And this is not a dissimilar relationship because this is an enormous building project and treatment plan. Obviously the biggest we've done in DPW. But having the design team there with an OPM, working with the town, is not dissimilar to the new school building where you have an OPM, an architectural team in the town.
Correct.
Right?
The Water Department and you, Greg, are going to be working with the neighbors around some of their concerns relative to the barriers that we talked about?
Oh, absolutely. That'll be written into the contract and the plans. And we will, when we get closer to the end of that point, we're not going to address that right off in the beginning of construction. But as we get towards the end of it and it gets time to do plantings and figure out what kind of vegetative barriers we will have in place, that's one we'll address, working with the neighbors and the abutters to make sure everybody gets what they need and everybody's happy over there when it's all said and done.
Great. Thank you.
Mark, any questions?
Yeah, just our clarifications. So it sounds to me, and I think I may have heard somebody say it, this is going to be an 18-month duration of this will be 18 months. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a five.
That's what we're hoping for.
Right, okay. So my question is if it goes beyond 18 months, which we're not hoping for that, but if it does go beyond 18 months, is our contract with them gonna, will it go beyond that 18 months? Or is there going to be a change order or a concern if it, or is it, you know, regardless of the duration of the project, this is the price?
It, that's kind of a loaded question in so much as it depends on what would cause the delay. If something, if something happens where the contractor can't start for the first six months of the project and they ask to get the timeframe extended. So sitting here, it takes two years to get it done. But the actual construction time is only 18 months, probably not. But if we get a bad apple of a contractor and they're delaying the projects, there, I'm not going to say it won't be an extension, but probably, you know, so.
I hear you. I hear you. Yeah. It's, you know, that is my concern is that, you know, when I look at these projects, when I look at, I look at all the ways things could potentially financially impact the town beyond where we're at. So with a contractor, obviously there's always change orders on projects. So, you know, watch out for those. But for something like this, I'm trying to figure out what could potentially change the contract sum to increase it. The only thing I can think of is if they're on-site longer.
And that would only happen because we have a bad contractor.
Right. So their contract, so their contract won't, it starts before we actually have a contractor on-site?
Yes, it actually, we're coming to the end of the design period. We're at 90% design. We're getting this wrapped up and ready to bid. The original contract, Rich, jump in if I have this incorrect. But their original contract ends after design is complete. This contract will bring it up to help them bid the project, award the project. And there's a lot of background and there's a lot of phone calls they have to make to do the back.
Part of the process now, yeah.
They have to start doing shop drawings almost immediately because there's a time and a back order for this. So this is a continuation of the natural process. And like Rich said, they staggered this just because in case something happened, EPG didn't have a part of a contract that wasn't going to get built. You know, now that they've completed the design, they get the next phase of the project. And they're very familiar with it. They know what they want. They do this all the time. So they know what kind of questions that come up, how to deal with questions from contractors. And they try to, you know, they're going to do things in the next, you know, to expedite the project. So we get this done as quickly as we possibly can.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jen, any questions?
Yes, this might be a dumb question or maybe not. But so I'm just trying to understand, I'm kind of the new kid on the block with the Select Board. But as far as the project process like this goes, I assume certain things you know upfront and you kind of build out a budget and you plan for things and there are things you don't. Is this like, is this an additive cost or something we expected to hit? And it's that it's now come forth that we have the numbers or how does that kind of work?
In the beginning of the project, we saw that we had a potential situation with the pandemic. And there was a lot of concern with the economy, how it was going to impact construction costs, how it was going to affect the town's overall budget. So knowing the scope and knowing what the town water supply needed for that project, we broke it in parts so that we could keep the project moving, but then deal with the more tangible parts of it, which are the larger construction costs, the steel, the filters that go in there. They're all critical now because they take time to construct, order, and bring onto site. So those are going to be some of the potential costs if, you know, the material. No one's stocking these things any longer. So everything has to be constructed and then delivered. So those are kind of the reasons why we delayed a portion of that because they could move on the permitting and the designing parts of it. Now, now it's, we were planning this part for the construction and that's why we were doing the amendment on.
Right. And so this amendment was anticipated, but initially, years back, we were considering, Public Works, some town administration were considering moving one very large article to town meeting to fund the whole project, design, engineering, construction oversight. And so Rich and Dave pointed, you know, when COVID hit, said, okay, well, let's, let's just fund in 2020 only the 1 million for design and permitting was funded so that the budget that informed the capital ask this spring had designed much, a much more refined design to work with, with more current pricing. So we are, we hope that the construction budget is more accurate. So this amendment was anticipated.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I would assume that there's some contingencies built into the budget?
There are, yes.
So, okay, usually, usually there are. All right, terrific. I think we lost Mark. He might have had a bad internet connection.
He's back now as an attendee.
Let's bring him in. Hold on a second. We'll give him a second to reconnect before we take the vote.
I'm here. Sorry about that. My internet at home just went down.
No problem, Mark. We get it. All right, so we are ready to take the vote. Craig, if you'd like to make a motion to award the, hold on a second, Contract Amendment Number One for Contract WAT-2021-01 to Environmental Partners Group for Engineering Services Related to the Bidding and Construction of the Water Treatment Plant.
Full moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
It's Barger, Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
AC, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Great. The next thing we have is discussion and vote for approval of the Board of Health Mosquito Control Educational Buck Slip to be included in the water and tax bills. I should have said, thank you, Greg and Rich for being here tonight. Sorry, jumping ahead quickly. So we have in our packet some information about what would go on those slips. Craig, I don't know. Do you have that in front of you?
No, I don't. As you mentioned, I was looking through my notes, but I don't, I don't have it, no.
I was going to put you on the spot and ask you if you wanted to read it because I know you love reading those things. But I think it's, I think it's worth, I can do it. I think it's worth commenting in public for anybody that's watching tonight what this will say. So as everybody knows, in our area with the Hawkemaw Swamp, we have some mosquito issues in the summer. And so these are some important things to do to reduce the number of mosquitoes and ticks around the home. The first one is to make sure screens are repaired and are tightly attached to doors and windows. The first one is to make sure screens are repaired and are tightly attached to doors and windows. Keep the grass cut short and keep the plants around stone walls cut short. Remove leaves and brush from around your home and prune low lying bushes to let in more sunlight and reduce moisture. Ticks need moisture to survive. Remove any standing water from places like ditches, gutters, old tires, wheelbarrows and wading pools. Mosquitoes can begin to grow in standing water that lasts for more than four days. I'd probably add to that bird baths because I have one in my yard that I have to keep checking also. Keep wood piles and bird feeders off the ground away from your home to discourage mice and other rodents which can carry ticks. Use a three foot wide wood chip mulch or gravel barrier where your lawn meets the woods. Ticks are less likely to cross a barrier onto your lawn. It can also serve as a reminder to people who cross the barrier that they're going into an area that may have ticks. And ask your local nursery about plants to use in your yard that do not attract deer. Deer carry ticks and spread them from place to place. So we have Kristin Kennedy here. Kristin, if you want to give us a little bit more information on this or any comments?
Sure, Doty, thank you. We are just beginning, actually, I shouldn't even say we're just beginning, the arbor virus season actually began back on June fourteenth, that's when the state began doing routine testing and trapping of mosquitoes. And they have recently, at that time, they added the twenty twenty one arbor virus surveillance and response plan was released. We recently added it to our website. And within the plan of the criteria that define the different risk statuses for both triple E and West Nile. And while we anticipate that this is going to be the third year of a triple E outbreak cycle, and we've been planning for that, Easton is beginning the year at low at low risk for both triple E and West Nile virus. And that's based on the fact that we've had activity in the past ten years. Luckily, we did not have any triple E activity in Easton last year, which is amazing. The recommended responses at this stage are to focus our efforts on community education outreach. So that's why I'm here tonight asking permission to have this buck slip go out with the water bills. And as Doty read it in full, it does focus on things that we consider integrated pest management, which are different things that people can take steps people can take to remove breeding grounds, make environments inhospitable to the different critter that we're trying to prevent. In this case, being mosquitoes and figured we'd throw ticks in there too because a lot of the steps are the same, keeping the grass and the plantings cut low, eliminating any standing water and moisture traps where these guys might like to breed. So that is why we are here tonight and we're hoping everybody will take a good look at it when they get it and routinely go around and check. Make sure that there aren't little places around their house that water is collecting especially.
These are great, simple things that everybody can do. So I appreciate you bringing this forward and I think it's a great idea to put this in with the water bills. Anybody have any comments or questions, starting with you, Craig?
Kristin, once again, for being out front with these kinds of issues.
We try.
Mark?
Yes, thank you, Kristin. You know, these are, they're common sense things, but it's one of those things where if somebody, if it's not brought to your attention, you might not do it. So this is perfect. So thank you.
And Jen?
Really glad to see that this will be included in the Millers. Is there any opportunity to add any content or any suggestions or?
Um, if you wanted to send me something, it that's, you pretty much have the final draft and I'm extremely limited in the space.
Okay, I was just thinking anything around encouraging, like a lot of people use Easton's, you know, beautiful outdoor environment to hike and walk. So maybe adding about checking pets regularly is a big one because they're they're just a giant vector for transporting ticks around. And the other one will be just remind folks to maybe wear long pants, tuck in their socks, their pant legs to kind of bring in that home app personal element of what you can do when you're out and about, you're just moving around.
Yep, I believe that's on the flip side. There's a, one side of it talks about wearing long sleeves, long pants.
Okay, you do have that in there, perfect.
I didn't even, I didn't even notice page two. Bookmark it. Mike, Mike wasn't in last week, so the packet is not as expertly bookmarked, that's my fault.
I'm glad I hit those points. We also have wearing light colored, light colored clothing, making it easier to spot ticks, checking yourself, your family members and your pets for ticks as soon as you come inside, scheduling outdoor activities so that you are not exposing yourself in the period from dusk to dawn. And if you find a tick, how to remove it. Also, the page two has the link to the Board of Health website that has much more information on and links to different pieces and helpful suggestions that people can use. It also has information on requesting spraying from Bristol County Mosquito Control. It has information on how to opt out of Bristol County Mosquito Control Spraying Program. It should also be noted that Bristol County Mosquito Control Project is just that, a project. And they, while everybody's really familiar and I think is really aware of their ground spraying with the trucks, they do help out in a lot of other areas as far as cutting back brush and cleaning out ditches and working on larviciding, catch basins and other trapped areas of water that otherwise might provide optimum breeding grounds for the mosquitoes. So they're an excellent resource for other activities and suggestions for dealing with water and breeding grounds on people's properties. And they are welcome, they will consult with individuals if there's some area of your yard that you're concerned about. They will definitely take your call and they will be happy to come out and offer suggestions.
Does the the Board of Health site or looking to see if there's any information on recommendations. I know previously they said when their spraying happening, you should close your doors and take out your air conditioning, turn off your conditioning, take out any fans, keep pets kind of out of the yard for a period of time. Is that information on the Board of Health site or?
So that information would typically be released, I think what you're referring to are precautions that are generally issued when the state makes a determination to do aerial spraying. So there's two different types of spraying that happen routinely. Bristol County Mosquito Control conducts ground based spraying with one chemical. That happens routinely from two A M to sunrise from the truck level. There is a second instance when we either reach a high level or critical level of risk or the state makes a determination that because geographically somebody else around us is in that scenario, that they will authorize aerial spraying. And at that point in time, we would utilize reverse nine one ones and Facebook and all of our other tools in our toolbox to get those specific recommendations out as as the situation dictates.
Perfect, thank you.
I think that's a really good point to differentiate the difference between the two kinds of spraying. And I think the last time they did the aerial spraying, it really was only over a corner of a part of Easton near the Hawkemaw Swamp. So it's not necessarily over the whole town. And like Kristin said before, for the ground spraying, you can call them to opt out to make sure that it it isn't at your property. But I think those are great points. Maybe what we could do is have this in the town crier if that wasn't already the plan and and certainly to get it on social media because this is really important information, especially in our town. That could be very susceptible to these, so. Excellent. Thank you for your work on that, Kristin. And I know that you've been very involved with the Twenty First Century Task, Mosquito Task Force as well. So you are up on all of this information as it comes about. So we appreciate your involvement in that. So if you would like to make a motion, Craig, to approve the Board of Health Mosquito Control Educational Buck Slip to be included in the water and tax bills.
No move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. Thanks, thanks so much to be here. Good to see you tonight, Kristin.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, and next we have the discussion and vote on the ratification of M O A for fiscal year twenty two for the International Association of Firefighters, Local twenty seven ninety. Connor, you want to just talk to us a little bit about that?
First of all, I apologize, I did not realize, I did not forward that to you until this meeting was beginning. So you all have it now, but it is exactly as we discussed, an executive session and consistent with the pattern across the town and schools. It is a one year extension, one percent cola in the operational matter that the board approved.
Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Well done, I'm sorry, Craig.
Sorry, go ahead, Mark.
Just well done on all parts involved. This is, I think this is a good thing for for all, everybody at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, all fifteen, I think, town and school unions are on the books for fiscal twenty two, so it's.
Excellent.
We appreciate the cooperation of all of the unions in really trying to work together to to get us through some of these tough times. And it's very much appreciated. So Craig, if you'd like to make a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement for fiscal year twenty two with the International Firefighters Local twenty seven ninety. That would, that would be a roll call vote as well. So Craig, you made the motion.
Second, Lamb.
Mark, second, so Barger, Lamb, back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. All right. Next up, we have general minutes dated June twenty first, twenty twenty one. Has anybody had any questions or? Everything look good? All right, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the general minutes dated June twenty first, twenty twenty one?
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. All right, town administrator notes?
I have none.
Okay, select board notes?
Yes, I have something, I had the privilege and the opportunity to be at the Eagle Scout awarding, the Matthew, Matthew Merkel lives in town, was awarded the Eagle Scout badge on the eleventh of July at Frothingham Park in front of a large group of family, friends and other scouts, including some Eagle Scouts. We were joined by Representative Carol Doherty and Senator Walter Timmeltie. Two of the exciting parts were that that Matthew was presented by Representative Doherty and Senator Timmeltie with a flag that had flown over the Massachusetts State House in his honor by the governor, which was kind of cool that they gave him the flag. And then to then, as his scout leader said, to one up the the state, he had a flag that was flown over the United States Capitol in June of this year in his honor by, on behalf of Matthew by Representative Jake Auchingclass, our congressman. So he has these two great flags, his Eagle Scout. And Matthew is going to be attending Wentworth Institute in Boston come the fall. So it was quite, it was a, it was a great affair. And I'm glad I had the opportunity to to address the the group and to meet Matthew and his parents.
That's great. Congratulations to Matthew.
My up? Okay, I do, I have a couple of comments. First, I, the first thing I want to make mention of and Doty, you might not be very happy with what I'm about to say. But I want to point out that you were nominated to be for the Commonwealth Heroin Award, Status of Woman by the potential next ambassador to Island Claire Cronin. And it's a big deal. And I just want to read what it actually is. So the annual Commonwealth Heroin Honors goes to incredible women who have been recommended by legislators from their districts and selected for their contributions to their community and the Commonwealth. Commonwealth heroines are women who don't always make the news, but truly make the difference in their communities, businesses or volunteer endeavors. You have been selected because you are a woman who, without fanfare or recognition, uses your time, talent, spirit and enthusiasm to enrich the lives of others. She could not have chosen a better person, so it's very well deserved. Congratulations. And that's pretty amazing. So.
Thank you.
Kudos to you.
Congratulations, Doty.
Congratulations.
Thank you. My face is turning red.
Could have gone a lot of ways. Won't like this, is not.
I thought you had pictures from Easton outside last week.
Doty's very humble and she does a lot in this town and a lot out of this town. So I know she would never say it. So somebody, somebody had to. And then, of course, I want to talk about economic development. So in economic development, the world of economic development, we have our Where's Chris campaign that's going on with Easton Outside, with the Eastern Chamber. Every, every Thursday, we've, we're planning on going to a new location. We've gone to McGuire's, we've gone to Shovel Town, and it's been a phenomenal turnout, so much fun. People, you know, there's been dozens of people coming and going, in and out, awesome pictures, great people. And we're looking forward to, you know, we have another Easton Outside meeting tomorrow. We're going to try and nail down our next places we're going to go to have this Where's Chris campaign. You show up, you get your picture taken, you enjoy the company, you know, talk to people, you hang out, find out what's going on in the world of economic development in the chamber. So, you know, keep your eyes peeled for Where's Chris and and Easton Outside and Economic Development.
It's really great. So much momentum and it's just so much fun, you know, after working so hard all the time that we do between, you know, our jobs and our lives and our town work to be able to just, you know, go out on a Thursday night and just see people and, you know, socialize and they have a lot of questions about what's going on and it's a lot of fun. It really, it's really nice way to end the week. So thanks for your work on that, Mark, and for everyone on the campaign. Jen, anything on your end?
I've got nothing this week.
Okay. One of the things I was just thinking about today, you know, when I see the activities and now that kids are home from school and I was thinking about our board and then I was thinking broader. You know, we have tried to prioritize some diversification on our boards and committees. And that's not just culturally, but also the age of the people that are volunteering, the background, the different abilities, the gender. And, you know, I started to think about the, this select board, we have three board members that have little kids. And it's really hard, you know, I don't know if everybody realizes that the select board in in our other boards and committees are all volunteers. You know, we get a stipend that doesn't even cover the cost of doing the job for the year, right? So essentially, we're volunteers and we're juggling work, home, life balance with this duty. And to have little kids and be able to do it, a few weeks ago, Mark's two little ones came in on an exceptionally long meeting and gave him a kiss goodnight. And boy, it really melted my heart. And I know what a challenge that can be. You know, Connor and Michael, they have little kids, they're working late hours. So I just, and I think, you know, the school committee and our other boards and committees, to get younger people to be involved, they do have younger families. And I just really, really want to express my appreciation that it would be easier to maybe wait a few years till the kids are older. But, you know, we need the younger voices to help us shape what our community is going to look like because they do have a different perspective, having young families, having kids. We also have the healthy aging, so we're getting that perspective from an older. We really want a three hundred and sixty five degree view of our community. So I just wanted to give a shout out to the people that are really making a huge sacrifice to come out and volunteer and do this really important work. We're, we're really crushing it just across the board on so many different levels and just wanted to express my appreciation for that. So.
Thank you, Doty. I just, I will add that, you know, I'm one of the ones with the little kids and it's hard. But it's a great opportunity to get them excited about getting involved in the community. And they will often ask me like, oh, you know, but you're going for a meeting, what are you, what are you doing, mom? Or they ask questions about the town and it's really cool to see those little wheels and connections kind of spinning and things being, you know, they they're starting to get it in their own way. So that's a really rewarding part of doing this as a parent and trying to juggle all the time and the craziness of it all. So for anybody who's on the fence about getting involved in some sort of opportunity for civil civic engagement, it it works out and it's totally worth it. There are rewards on the other side.
If if I could add, I mean, this is such a a top. If, if I could add, I mean, this is such a, a, a topic that is really important to me. So I think I talked to you, Jen, I know I talked to Jamie, and one of the things about me and, and my kids, and they're young, you know, they're eight and twelve. And I've been doing this since uh, for like six years between finance, I said, they were really young when I started. Um and I said, you know, I, I, one of the major reasons why I do it is because I want my kids to see me do it. Because when they get older, I want them to do it, to be part of their community. And it works because my mother was on the finance committee for years, she ran for the select board uh in the eighties. And I remember going around town, putting up signs for her. Um so she instilled that in me when I was, you know, five, six, seven, eight years old. And I tried to do it for my kids, uh because being part of your community is really important. So it's not just, you know, your kids are watching you do this and that's incredible.
And as they grow, they'll get the different perspectives. My daughter used to love it when people would say, oh, is your mom Dottie Full Janetti? And my son would say, never heard of her, so. It depends, it depends on their perspective. Well, another great meeting tonight, so thanks everyone for being here and for watching at home. Uh Craig, if you want to make a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
That's Barger Lamb, back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Full Janetti, yes. Have a great week, everyone.
Thank you.
Stay safe, everybody.
The recording has stopped.